Ah shit, there's a wall. Ugh, breaks don't fail me. Yo, what up guys? It's me! FBI Agent York.
Greenvale Community Center. Now that's an impressive building. Clock Tower is impressive too.
Didn't they say something about the clock tower having like... A bad history? Can't necessarily remember. Oh yeah, there's the thing. Yep, okay.
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary school. I'm not some tree in the wind this time either. That was a tough role. I was a piece of scenery. Bright red tree.
Oh, that's why you'd like have these traumatized dreams. You had a bad childhood. Hahahaha! I really am an agent! Music part of the game, it is where the music, yeah, it's where it originates from, it's this game. Every time I hear this music, I think about the backwards forward talking dream in Twin Peaks. Okay. Hmm, okay. Children? Anna was like 20 something, wasn't she? She was like an adult! Still someone's child, yeah, it's true. Who that? Oh, it's the lady with the stilettos! Carol McLean!
Who's the fashionable late one?
That's Carol, Thomas's sister. She owns a bar.
Thomas's sister?
What? Can I date Thomas and his sister? Best of both worlds. Thank you. Alright. Bark. The mask has spoken! Oh, what's up, well? How are you?
When paying for our sins, we must not frown. The loss of Anna was for that debt.
Well, that sounds fucking amazing! Just everyone screaming "frag" out. Alright. Anyone in particular?
Agent Morgan, here's your chance to get to know some of the townsfolk. Don't let it go to waste.
Okey dokey, I just like you, George. Here we go again. That's me! Really? He said that? Oh shit. What are you gonna do, break his legs? This is good cop, bad cop routine right here.
Thanks for the warning, Harry. But don't worry. Me and Zack, we know what we're doing.
Yeah. Still think I'm Zack?, don't know... Lot of people. Coffee? They'll take free coffee. Oh hey Emily, I've met you before. I don't think I'm... Okay. Don't think there's anybody in the audience we're talking to? Especially not this one farmer who came out? Richard and Quinn are out here! Hey guys. Lay it on us. What? Vegetables, huh? Okay. Hey.
A friend of mine was killed, you know man? I'm not letting this one go quietly. I'll do anything to help you catch the scumbag who did this.
Thank you. But vigilance is not justice. Nothing good will come from desiring simple revenge.
Oh come on, I'm not that stupid. But I'm frustrated a bit just thinking that there's nothing I can do about it.
We each have a role, purpose in life. Raison d'être. Don't forget that.
I know, I know. Just don't preach to me, you're sounding like my old man.
Yo. Yo, let's deputize Quinn. Hello, Usher.
Agent York, you make any progress?
Of course, plenty. Tell me, Usher, when is Anna's funeral?
That's still undecided. Sally isn't really in any condition to do it right now.
Her mother? I don't see her here.
Anna was the sole reason for living after her husband was deceased. Well, she's probably huddled up at home.
And I should probably take some time to pay her a visit.
Well, yes you should. And I'd appreciate it if you could too. But don't go too hard.
Oh Jesus Christ! Yeah, thanks Starlord. Uh, what the heck? Oh, there we go. Where's that lady? Who are you? Doing it again.
So you're the FBI agent, are ya?
Did I start crying? Wahahaha, dickbutt. Thank you Starlord for the other hundred bits. Yeah, you did like, give me a startle.
So why are you living here?
Thanks though.
Was that a problem?
Deep as I hear it too, man.
It is. I'm interested. Can you tell me more about this?
What the heck, man? Wonder if you're your story? Alright.
One thing though. Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
Raw power. I can feel it. Who you two?
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. And you are?
Olivia, Nick's wife?
Or Mick.
Anna worked at your husband's diner, right? What kind of girl was she?
Well, she was a very hard worker. A nice girl.
So why did you kill her?
Well, not really. But, there was one thing. Well, you see, the diner closes when it rains. Many shops do that around here, as you might have heard. Anyway, Anna always seemed unfocused the day after it rained. And came in late too. It was almost as if she used up all her energy the day before. Come to think of it, that was really strange. Did that legendary monster really kill her?
It wasn't a monster. Just a criminal. Criminal I'm going to catch and bring to justice.
Wrong with your face. So you must be Nick. I can already hear the pointing. Oh, it's tapping. Kinda like pointing.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about Anna Graham.
Anna Graham?
Nick? Are you hiding something?
No, nothing.
I believe him.
You sure?
I'm sorry, but I don't like repeating myself.
Okay. They're good people. Oh, you're looking at, gimme that! Life is beautiful, dude, dude, dude. Well, thank you very much, Grim, for the two months. Talked to one of the best characters in the game so far.
Mr. Morgan, you're quite an impressive public speaker.
Really? Thank you, Polly.
You reminded me a little of a play I saw when I was younger.
What kind of play?
I'm talking about back when this place was still called the Mercury Theater. When I was young, I used to come here often with my husband. God rest his soul. We'd come on the weekend to see the latest play. He'd always pretend to be uninterested, but I could tell he was excited inside. He was just one of those kinda guys, really, thinking about it now.
Really, Polly? So what's your favorite play?
Oh, well, I like so many. There was one in particular, but I can't recall the name anymore. Oh, it was a very famous one too.
Something by Shakespeare?
Oh, um... No, nothing.
What was the play, Polly?
It doesn't ring anymore. I've always been forgetful about the plays we used to see anyway. Oh, and my husband would get angry at me for forgetting what we saw. He'd go on for hours retelling what the play was about. His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy.
I see. So, what's your favorite play?
Oh, I almost forgot, Mr. Morgan. We're going to have another guest soon. I have to get back and get things ready.
Okay. See you later! Simply amazing. Who you?
Oh my, my pot is getting cold.
Roaming Sigourney.
Hey, mister, my pot is getting cold.
You are... Who?
What are you saying? I'm Sigourney. Sigourney!
Sigourney, okay. Now, what is the matter? Can you explain?
No time for chatting. I need to hurry. My pot is getting colder.
What is happening?
Oh, you're useless.
Alright. Well, that's happening. Oh, there's Jim and Gina. Who you? Is that my boy? Oh, look at this slow walk.
The plan was the Garfield effect.
Thank you for the thousand bits, Starlord, goddamn. It's the bull.
I ain't got nothing to tell the cops.
What about the FBI?
Shut up!
At least give me your name.
I'm Jack. They call me Raging Bull.
That's a manly nickname.
If you want info, it'll cost ya. I only talk to Ben Franklin.
You know, first impressions are important. I can detain you for a few days and maybe you'll become more fun to meet. Zack, this is a waste of time. Let's go.
You can give him a thousand buckaroos if I'm not mistaken. Place to save though. The timing on that sound effect and him putting it to his ear was perfect. Where's that lady? Who you? Oh, I can get my tools from here. That's good to know. Yeah, we are inside. Who spits inside?
Wesley, owner of the gun store called Panda Bear. People around here call me the Gunsmith.
Wesley the Gunsmith, of course.
How do you make a living running a gun store in a place like this? I'd be worried because there can't be that many customers.
Worry gives a small thing a big shadow. I do gunsmith work in my shop too. If you got the skills, the customers find you. All you need is a network.
I hope so.
Um, sure, all toolbox. Here's what I've got. Am I selling or buying? I think I'm buying right now. Actually, I'm good on everything. I don't know why he sells candy though, that's kinda strange. Guns are just tools for killing people. I don't like it any more than you do. You telling me this gunsmith man came to a town meeting? Able to sell his wares in the lobby?
Understood. Look forward to it. The shop will be open again tomorrow. It's usually open from 2000 to 0600. See you then.
Do I need to talk to everyone? Thomas included? Where's Thomas's sister?
Agent York, your words really made me think about Anna's death again.
I'm sorry.
I'm still in shock.
Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo? I do actually, but why?
Could you show it to me, please?
What?
Oh my god!
Here?
Yes! Right now. No getting away with it.
Okay. If it's gonna help you any.
Strip, Thomas. Hahaha, that sigh.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that...
Oh?
It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not! What are you saying?
Thanks fatigue zombieto. For the eight months!
You ought to see that tattoo, Zack. A big heart with an arrow through it and Love G in the center.
Oh!
I don't know when he got that done, but... We've all been through the eighties.
What's up artistic? Hmm. Another mystery. Who is Love G? Tramp stamp, I bet? Oh, it absolutely could be. Oh hey! I like to smoke and trip on peyote too, you wanna hang out?
Anna was an airhead.
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead even in heaven. She changed her hair every day. If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one and she'd almost be in tears. She broke many, many plates every day at the diner, and she'd always have a smile on her face. Always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead.
What the fuck? Look at her break all those dishes! Oh! My god. Oh shit, too soon? Carol wanna be the goddess? She didn't see the bad shit, you're right. Which way did she go, fellers? Hello, guy? Check it.
Good evening, agent.
Is this the guy telling the story?
Good evening, mister...
Brian. The gravekeeper. Brian.
Mister Brian? I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Oh, she was... So beautiful. Too soon. Too, too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here. Looking for the one who did it. Were you close to her?
Anna, her smile, so warm.
This guy's totally fucking normal, it's fine. Not creepy at all. Not someone who would bite your tongue off.
Are you getting closer to catching the murderer?
You know it's your hand!
Good to see you here.
Well, Doctor Johnson told me to be here. He said it would be important.
Well, that was good advice. He may be young, but he seems like a wise man.
Doctor Johnson gave you good advice!
Everyone thinks he's some kind of weirdo, but I don't think so at all. People don't understand why he's in the autopsy room all day. But I do.
Oh? Oh, absolutely!
I did not know that.
You didn't? Oh, the doctor is a very rich man. He has a really big house over by the lake.
Oh!
Amazing, Zack. He must be loaded. Rich and young. A perfect combination.
But you don't get that feeling from him at all, do you? He doesn't show it. That's one of the things I like best about him.
The doctor talking to his own Zack?
Thanks for the valuable information, Fiona.
He was also doing the head tappy thing. There they go.
Hey Lily.
Agent York, your speech frightened some of us a little.
Oh, sorry.
Really? I tried my best to be gentle. So, have you noticed anything strange or out of place recently?
Hmm... Just Becky, really. She works part-time at the store. She's been acting strange recently.
Strange, how?
I took the boys along to visit her house today. I was just worried, you know, because she hasn't come into work at all after that incident. But she took in the boys and told me to wait outside. Something about a special secret between just the three of them. I just couldn't understand it.
Now that's interesting. Thank you, Lily.
Gotta find Becky and Gorilla. Oh, what up rocker Keith?
Hey York, you were rocking it large up there!
Was I? I haven't been on stage like that since elementary school.
You made me think, man, like, things can't go on like this. We need like, some action or something. I was pretty psyched up, you know, before you got on stage. I was like, dude, a real psycho in town. Pretty sweet gig. But now, I mean, dude, that lunatic could be any one of us, man. I don't wanna think of that whack job coming after my family. Makes me shudder all over, man. It was way too heavy. You'll catch him, right FBI?
Of course. But you need to be able to take care of those you love too.
You're right, man. Right on the level. I need to do what's right for my family, man. You lit my soul, man. Thanks FBI!
Invest in shovels, dude. They're great weapons. So I've met everyone. Haven't talked to everyone. Oh shit. I've talked to everyone. Oh, shit. So I need to talk to literally everyone.
Jim, thanks for your help in the forest. How are Isaac and Isaiah?
They're fine.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Well, I guess they do, son. I wanna keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can.
Oh, yeah?
Their mother agrees, which is why she lets me take care of them so often.
And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home. Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to in order to do my job. But I understand what you mean.
I had to wear my good suit today.
I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this, Zack.
Hello again, Agent York. How are you?
Good, thanks. And you?
Oh, I'm feeling pretty good today.
Well, that's good to hear. Do you have any information that could help me out?
Information? Sounds difficult and not my kind of conversation. Anyways, you should come by the gas stand again. I'll give you the best service in town.
Oh, heck yeah!
Zack, perhaps you can tell me, why did she bother coming here?
Oh. Time.
Agent Morgan? I'd like to let everyone go home now. Let's go outside.
God damn it.